All right, good evening. I call this February 6, Samamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We're here at City Council Chambers at Samamish City Hall. Tonight, we have two new commissioners with us. I'll introduce them, and of course, they can say more if they choose to. On my right, Carthick Sitaraman. Is that close, Carthick?
That's fantastic.
Great. And to my left, Mike Presko. Welcome to both of you. Okay, let's start out on the agenda this evening with roll call, starting on my left.
Rituja Indapuri.
Mark Lewis.
Mike Presko.
Mark Baughman.
Carthick Sitaraman.
And Commissioner Larry Crandall is, I think, on vacation, so he's not going to be here. And we have Commissioner Josh Amato on the phone, and hopefully, that will work if he has questions or comments. Can you hear us, Josh?
I can.
Great. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anyone have any comments or questions about the agenda for this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Approval of the minutes from the January 16 meeting. Any comments from that meeting, from the meeting minutes? Give Josh a chance. Okay, seeing no comments, we'll call the meeting minutes from the January 6 meeting approved by common consent. Next, we have public comment for non-agenda items. So the primary agenda item for this evening is the small cell wireless facilities. And so if you have public comment on something other than that, now's the time. Does anyone like to make public comment other than on the agenda item? And these are three minutes apiece.
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish. I want to speak on two brief, non-agenda topics tonight. The first one, welcome, new planning commissioners. As you go through a life volunteering to do this position, you'll end up reading something called the Comprehensive Plan. And I just wanted to point out, that happens to be the introduction page, and I printed you each a copy of the page. There's an artwork on that. And the reason I'm pointing out is the artwork is by Anna McCray. And City Hall has an art gallery out in the hall. I don't know if you've noticed it, there's also a Shifting Viewpoints reception tomorrow. And Anna McCray is actually the artist who's featured. So I just want to let you know that it's a way that art was integrated into the city planning documents, and I just wanted you to know. There is a little haiku on it as well, there's a little poem, I can't read that one because it's too far away. But the Parks one says, "Shadows lengthening over the skate park for sleeves of autumn." So just wanted to thank you for that and give a shout out to the Arts Commission for the great work that they do. The other two things I handed out were two papers. I'm from Bozeman, Montana, and you're like, why are you handing out stuff from Bozeman, Montana? When I lived in Bozeman, it was about 20,000 people with 10,000 with the university, so it was about 30,000 people. When I moved to Samamish in 2000, it was about 30,000 people. And Bozeman has grown past 50 and is moving on to 70,000, and Samamish is past 50, moving on to 70,000. Also, I do work in Bozeman periodically, and I picked up their brochure from 2008 for their Urban Forestry Management Impflow Panel. And there is also one sheet from a homeowner's association. Now, the Urban Forestry Management Plan isn't coming to you, I think, for a couple more meetings in March. But I wanted to bring up these ideas because with Urban Forestry Management Plan, you are going to have to change code, do some regulations, and then there will be things that are not code but could be done. And this is just really great ideas. So for example, the open space tree donation form is where if people want to donate things in a homeowner's association, how they'd be able to do that. And it's an example from Bozeman. And people could do it. And the setting down roots in our community, their information pamphlet, just has a lot of ideas that I think were worthwhile. So I'm just going to highlight some of the things I read. First of all, that the urban forest in Bozeman is estimated value is $30 million. They have about 14,000 trees, and they have more than 50 tree species. They are also a Tree City USA. They know that trees, among other things, reduce carbon dioxide, and it can increase property values. And their example is one 70-year-old oak tree in Bozeman is worth $12,000, just that individual tree. They also have a forestry division in Bozeman, and they've agreed to plant 500 additional trees over the next five years. They have a tree advisory board that I assume is something like a commission board, which would be done by people. I think that might be a worthy idea. They also have some regulations that require 75% of a boulevard area be covered with live vegetation. And also, if you want to plant a tree, you have to get a permit. It's a free permit. You go and you pick it up. It tells you what to do, where to do it, look at utilities, what types of things to do. And I just think it's really full of good ideas. So I hope that you might read that, because I think everybody needs to think about with Urban Forestry Management Plan coming up, what could be done. And the earlier we get input from people, the better the overall program will be from the Planning Commission looking at it through City Council. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mary. I like Bozeman. Paul?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Paul Stickney, 22626 Northeast Inwood Hill Road. Welcome to two new commissioners. And I've been involved for a little while on some of the issues in Samamish, and I'm going to stay that way, advocating for some long-term, sustainable solutions. But that's not the, you know, purpose this evening, to say hi. Just a couple updates. I went to the Senior Center opening event at the Boys and Girls Club yesterday, was expecting about 50 people. They had 250 people. It was awesome. And the mayor came, and she called the bingo cards, and I almost won, but I didn't. There were, there were a lot of people there, though. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of community spirit. It was actually, you know, it was pretty exciting. That's being done by not, it's not the Human Services Committee, but Tom Ellers, I'm not sure I'm saying his last name correct, and Joyce, you know, yeah, Bottenberg and the Sheds, and lots of people were there. And it was, there was, it was a pretty lively crowd. It was fun. So anyway, I think that's, that's a real good, you know, addition for the community. And I'd like to shout out, not because he's here, but it's a good thing, both, you know, Kristi Mauchow and Kent Drine held council hours in the last week for the public to come. And there haven't been any of those for a year, and I think that's a really good trend out there. So that's a shout out. And odds are, you guys saw it, but at the City Council meeting on Tuesday, the KFC Sustainability Charter got basically approved by the council. It's not a firm commitment, but it's a step in, in moving forward to integrate all the comp plan goals of sustainability into our community. And odds are, you also saw this, but the Arch Housing Work Plan and Trust Fund projects also got okayed by the council on Tuesday. So those are just a couple updates, and have a good meeting on 5G.
Thanks for your comments, Paul. I can't imagine how they'd let you in the Senior Center, since you can't possibly be old enough for that.
I was just 13.
All right, anybody else for a non-agenda public comment? Okay, thanks. We're going to move on next. Our new business item for the, this evening, each time, once a year, we choose chair and vice chair. And so this is the time of year to do that. So we're going to be choosing chair and vice chair this evening. I will tell you that I've been chair for a year, and I'm going to ask for any nominations that anyone has for, let's do the chairman first.
You.
Is that a nomination?
Yes.
Second?
I won't fight, but if there's anyone else who has a strong passion, you're welcome to sit in the middle and be on cable television. No one else? Okay, all those in favor of, as awkward as this sounds, all those in favor of me continuing as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I guess I'm going to continue on. That makes the rest of this little process go pretty smoothly, too. So we also need a vice chair. Our vice chair is no longer on the commission, so are there any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Rituja.
Second?
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of Rituja as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Aye.
There's a little delay there with Josh. But we got it. Thank you, Josh. Okay, congratulations, Rituja. Every time I take a vacation, you get to sit in the chair. All right, let's move on to the meaty topic for this evening, which is our old business item, which is our public hearing and deliberation on wireless communication. I believe we're going to start out with some comments from staff, from Dennis and maybe David Pyle, and then we'll have some discussion.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Josh, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. Again, the wireless cell facilities, a presentation for you folks tonight, an overview. Real quick, just thank you, PC, for your patience on this and letting us work through all these issues before I jump in. A bit of an expanded presentation tonight, because it is a hearing, and we have some folks in the audience who weren't here through all the workshops, so took the liberty to expand it just a little bit, to be a little bit more comprehensive. So this evening, we do have the public hearing. I'm going to start off with the recap of how we got here, why we're doing the code change, the intent of the code, the mechanisms, an overview, proposed edits from our January, from the last meeting, January 16th, a summation of sort of a 30,000, 40,000-foot overview of what the function of the code, and then, of course, discussion, public hearing, and then looking for a recommendation this evening.
If I can jump in for a second, too.
No problem. No, it's okay. It's actually a timely point. So before we begin the presentation, I just wanted to provide a little overview on what we're trying to achieve here. Wireless rules are something that are extremely challenging for the city to implement. There are generally people that are not happy.
Sorry for the recording. Can you say it, David?
Thank you, Chair Baughman, David Pyle, Community Development. Continuing on, wireless regular, wireless facilities are extremely difficult for our providers to cite. They're extremely challenging for the community in regards to the fact that there are some members of the community that want the facilities for the purpose of having the connectivity that they provide. There are some members of the community that don't want the facilities out of fear around health implications, aesthetic impacts, and just generally not wanting to have that type of facility in their living environment. As such, it becomes really challenging to write rules that will address all of the concerns that we hear through this process. We've tried to do that. We've tried to balance this in a way that helps inform the community when there is a new type of facility being pushed out into their neighborhood. It also gives a provider an opportunity to provide factual information about why they have to cite something in a certain location in order to give them a chance to explain their business plan or their technical requirements to the community. And it also provides a local venue in some instances where we can have a conversation in the form of an appeal setting at the city, as opposed to going to court or something about it. That seems to be something we do here in Samamish quite a bit. We try to resolve things locally before things go off to a board or a court that's outside of the city. So when we talk through this, you'll see there are some areas of disagreement between the staff and providers, or there are areas where citizens want us to regulate even further than what we're attempting to do with this code. We're trying to find a balance. That's our objective here. We're trying to find a balance where people are informed, where there's opportunity to share information, and where there are opportunities to file appeals or avenues of recourse, such as a variance for a provider, if they feel like a regulation is overly burdensome in a certain instance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis. I hope that helps provide a little bit of direction as to what we're trying to achieve as staff, and we'll see what your comments are.
Okay, and on some of those topics, I'll dive a little bit deeper, and I might even turn to David here for a minute or two, depending on how things go. So why we're doing the code change? We have an existing wireless cell facility code. It has some conflicts in it, the way it jumps around with it and ties in. So it needs to, it would need to be updated for that, anyway. We want to ensure we have compliance with state statutes. And then we're getting to the driver here, the FCC rules that came out last year, and then, of course, the deployment of 5G. So really, they sort of overlap each other, but those are the reasons why we're dealing with a code change. Thank you, that's exciting. And so what are we going to repeal? 21855, that's the actual wireless cell facilities, that would be the complete title. And then, under 21820, there's a permitted use section, and that has references and definitions to wireless cell facilities. And then in 21B Town Center, the references to wireless cell facilities in there as well. So how we got here to this evening, we had the public outreach, we did the farmer's market there twice this last, this last summer. And then we have Kadex Samamish webpage. We held a meeting with HOA providers, HOA providers, HOA members. And we had a committee meetings, we had a tech committee, we had the provider meetings, we had consultants on board to get us going, and of course, legal involvement. September 5 was our first presentation to the commission here. That was an informational meeting, so it gets you folks up to speed on what this is all about. Then our first work session on a, on a first blush of a draft code. Then December 12, another work session. January of this year, January 16, another work session, and tonight, the public hearing. The overview is sort of driven by three sort of gears, the process, design, and location. That's sort of the gears of the code. The process, the procedures, the design components, and where do they, where do they get cited? That process is going to be broken down into an exemption level, the permit type, and a variance. And so exemptions are going to primarily be for the small facilities. We have some exemptions for what's called an EFR, which is an eligible facilities request. That goes back to some older state statutes that were required to have that provision, so we do have an exemption for that, for that process. The reason we really tried to gear towards the exemptions is because of the FCC rules that have some limitations on time. Those are the shot clocks you'll hear about, about how long we can review a permit. The FCC allows for batched applications, which is a grouping of applications. At the same time, the FCC restricts our revenue streams that we can collect, called safe harbor provisions for fees. And so how do you navigate those, the deployment of what could be a, of a batched application with limitation on revenue streams coming in, and try to meet all those criteria? Well, we come with the process of exemptions for the small cell, because again, we cannot prohibit, right, or even have rules that create an effective prohibition. And so we just tried to create that process and steer the provider into the exemption process. If they get outside that, then they'll fall under a permit type and have to go through the land use permitting process. And if they're still outside that, then there's the variance process. The variance process, of course, will have a public hearing component to it as well. One other thing I want to share, this, I'm going to piggyback off of what David shared here a few minutes ago. We tried to create a process, knowing that we can't have it effectively prohibited, and yet still try to give an avenue to where there could be some input. Yet, how do you have input to where you have the public show up and say, well, we don't like this, and we're permitting it, and we have to share with them, well, we can't prohibit it because the FCC rule says that we can't, and yet have some sort of a, so that's sort of that fine line that we tried to walk in developing the code. Okay? So the process we have is a type 1, and this is when you're going through the land use permit process if you're not exempt. And that would be a decision by the director. There is no administrative appeal. Okay? Type 2, decision by director, and that is an appeal to the hearing examiner. So the type 2 is primarily going to be the macros, the really large facilities, okay? The really large, larger towers. The exemptions have no appeal. Okay? And then a franchise, if you're going to have any kind of a location within public right-of-way, the code requires that you get a franchise agreement, which is where you have to go to council, and council would have to approve that, that franchise agreement with the provider. So we have the permit type notice for the type 1, it's adjacent property owners, and that's for the, again, primarily the smaller cells. Type 2 is 1,000 feet. Variance, it's a type 2, it's 1,000 feet. So that's the noticing requirements. The exemption process, again, is primarily for small wireless cell facilities, the EFRs that I mentioned. The TV antenna, small satellite dish, those are carryovers from our old code, so I just brought them along, just so we don't have to deal with any question of somebody ever put up a TV antenna or like a dish TV without having created a new code. And then we also have a provision for temporary facilities as well. The variance process, if you folks are familiar with that, typically under the land use provisions of the code, the variance process has a set of criteria that typically deals with topography, size, and shape of the, of the lot. Now, that really doesn't fit for the variance for a cell facility, because we're talking sighting of a tower or a dimension of a tower. So we created our own variance processing criteria, that's what's up on the screen. And it is a stand, it is standalone, along with the, with the wireless cell code. In other words, you don't go to the variance section of the municipal code. The variance process is outlined within the WCF code, or 21.56. So we start to now get into the location and where they are, where they can be located. So if the provider comes in and meets the design criteria, the aesthetics of what we're looking for, they wouldn't, they would be exempt from the citing criteria, from the, from the tiering criteria of having to go through this process. They would still, if they're in the right-of-way, of course, need a public right-of-way permit, electrical permit, you know, possibly a building permit, but not a land use permit. That's the exemption. And so under location, we have a tier 1. So if someone's to come in, we'd say, okay, can you co-locate on existing WCF? If they can, great, they can co-locate, they're good to go. If they go, if they, if they, for some reason, they can't meet anything under tier 1, they go to tier 2. If they can't meet anything under tier 2, then they go into, everything that's outside of those two tiers is a variance process for, for citing. The caveat here is going back to that, that sort of issue that David touched upon of how do we create a process to where if somebody comes into the neighborhood from a neighborhood and they're really concerned about a cell facility going in, and who decided, and why did they get to do this, and why not? And, you know, instead of leaving it to some sort of a code that has a discretionary component to it, where the director or staff has to make a call, we tied it to a technical reason. And that technical reason is, you have to either be able to do it under tier 1. If you can't, you need an engineering analysis from like an RF engineer to go to tier 2. You can't do, you need the, a technical analysis to go into the variance. So if somebody was to come in and be upset, we can show them, they can't do it, here's why, here's the technical analysis. And that is, of course, also subject to a third-party review. So we wouldn't just be taking the provider's engineering analysis, we would, we would have an on-call engineer that would do a review, somebody who has the expertise to do that review and to substantiate that analysis that was done. Okay? And so it's sort of the same thing for the small wireless, the tiering component is the same. You have tier 1, you have to meet that criteria, if not, you go to tier 2, if not, you go to a variance. So now we're moving on to some of the design issues here. So under the micro, the small wireless facilities, we know, we have learned that it's a limited range that they can transmit, and they have to be typically grouped, especially for the 5G, in order to function. So we came with a spacing of 600 feet per provider. And the reason is because you could have two or three poles on a block from one company without a spacing requirement, and then two or three poles on another block, and then two or three poles, I'm sorry, on that same block, and then two or three poles from another provider on that same block. So you can end up with, you know, 12, 15 poles potentially on a block, and, and that could eventually find its way into some of the residential areas, and thought, well, that is going to probably cause some issues. And so we came with a 600-foot spacing, which is about the length of a block. And if it's another provider going in, okay, then the provider from provider, it's 100-foot spacing. So AT&amp;T came in, dropped a tower 600 feet before they could have another tower, 600 feet before they could have another tower. T-Mobile comes in, they have to be at least 100 feet from the AT&amp;T one, and so on and so forth. Okay? The above, they can have above-ground equipment, pole-mounted equipment. We did look at undergrounding, but concurred with the providers and Public Works, giving us some feedback as to why that really doesn't work. So it's above-ground equipment and pole-mounted equipment. The equipment color, we have some aesthetic requirements for that, sort of the natural colors. Art can be on some of that equipment, on those buildings, or that, to cover it, as long as it goes through the Arts Commission and gets approval. A key component here is, we didn't want to find ourselves in sort of a, the go-between between a provider who's trying to deploy in a neighborhood where there are private streets, and it's, and those poles are owned by an HOA, or a public street and the poles are owned by an HOA, say the light poles, then we're going to connect to those light poles. So we gave deference to the HOA. If the HOA wants the power packs on the, are the equipment packs on the pole, fine. If the HOA wants the offsets to be 12 inches, fine. We really don't want to be in the arena of negotiating between the HOA and the providers and trying to be that referee. So we give deference to what the HOA wants. It's their community, it's their neighborhood, and as long as it's within the parameters of the code, that, that's great. The new pole, integrated with existing pole design, that's for the small cell as well. And the X is, of course, small cell, and the macro is what they're referencing there up on the screen. Connection offsets deferred to pole owner, again, that goes back to what I just said. The max height for a small cell is 50 feet. There are some nuance to that, per the FCC rule, where they can get above that, but they, but it is limited. It's, so it's in the area of around 50 feet. The macro is 90 feet. And we came up with 90, has an average between, what I looked up and saw for Izakua and Redmond, just took an average, and it was like, I think it was like 91.5, so just made it 90. We're looking for a design for colocation, as we understand, that necessarily does not work with 5G, so we made an exception for that. The fully-contained equipment or a fully enclosure, T-Mobile has a, has a system that's fully enclosed, I think another provider does, too. We make a provision to allow that. The antennas need to be painted, except we've learned you can't paint the 5G antennas because they deal in the millimeter wavelength, and that causes some issues for the, for the transmittal of that. And continuing on, pole light strand structures, not city-owned. We have standards in place for that. A new pole can be okay if the existing one does not work. And again, we have provisions on how that works. Again, we're back to the 600 feet apart, per provider, 100 feet for another provider, dealing with the aesthetics for the community. Must be in alignment and equidistant between existing poles. We create an area called an amenity zone, so the poles just don't wander down if they're installing new poles, they have to have some sort of uniformity to them. And we're looking to place them on a property line, if we can, instead of in front of the home, but if there's a property line there, and they can drop it on, on that property line, instead of in front of the, the person, the structure of the business, that's the preferred method. And so here's an illustration of that. There's the amenity zone, there's the two poles that are 600 feet apart. And then you can see under this one, there's 600 feet from the two, and then another pole is within 100, that'd be a different provider, and it's located on the property lines. We're trying to get them to be on a property line, so they're not in front of homes. And again, this is deployment for new poles in these scenarios, not if they were attaching equipment to an existing pole. So we did some mockups here, and these are some illustrations showing if they were to be within that amenity zone. And this is a situation where they weren't able to hook to a light pole, so these are called monopoles. They're just a pole that's designed to hold the array on top, or this, the fully encased unit, in this case, it'd be like a T-Mobile deployment, where everything's in their, in their canister. So you can see roughly what that would look like, if they had additional poles, if they were not allowed to hook, or there wasn't existing poles to hook onto. It would end up looking something like that. This one shows an equipment base, where there's some equipment down in the, in the base of the pole, and with the antennas on top. And then some deployments here of the macros. And what we're looking for, for our design criteria, we really want to try to keep it natural. Wood, the photo on the right is actually in town, but basically, the design criteria for the macros really lends us to what you're seeing here. So over the process, we had comments from the providers, we worked with them and took in quite a bit of their comments. We modified the exempt language, we clarified on the tiering process, did some modifications on that. And actually, I met with Josh after the last planning commission meeting, he had some great questions. I did some clarifying under the tiering system, you'll see that in the draft for, for this evening. Clarified the HOA differences for the aesthetics. I noticed when I was doing a reread after that... I noticed when I was doing a reread after that, it's sort of inferred it, but I just clarified it and you'll see that, that's in the, that's a modification in tonight's draft. And then equipment offsets deferred to pole owner, that is in the code. And then we did a lot of clarifications, just some cleaning up as we were reading through, his legal read through, the providers read through, the staff read through. So issues that we are still in disagreement on with the providers, the location criteria, the variance process, they have a different concept, a different term. I think we shy away from that because when I looked at how those other processes are, it's really a deference that would fall on the shoulders of staff without going through that process. So we really like the variance concept from our perspective. The height on the macro continues to be an issue, but again, if they need relief from that, they can go through the variance process. Design issues, of course, Section 130 seems to be a sticking point with the providers. Collocating also is an issue, and then the illustrations in Section 130 seems to also cause some consternation for the providers. So the edits that we did post the January 16th meeting, we got some, the first one is the one we got from Planning Commission specifically, where under Section 130 where the illustrations begin, I put in a text box above the illustration and within that text box, I put in that narrative that talks about the illustrations are for illustrative purposes, the actual language within the facility controls. If there's a conflict between the illustrations and what ends up being in the Public Works' design standards, then those standards in Public Works are going to trump, of course, because we're starting to get into area of safety issues in those standards where the design stuff is simply aesthetic. Section two is from the provider, or the next dot down is from the provider, Section 21856020, those are recommendation, I highlighted in yellow and underlined it, we accepted that, it seemed to make sense, that's technically feasible. Another comment from the provider suggested we get rid of the language total integration because nothing is totally integrated. I would agree with that. So that seemed to make sense, so we took that comment. And then the ground-mounted and/or were both words, so we took out the "and," should be just ground-mounted or pole-mounted, you really can't have both. Equipment is, so we made that modification. The next bullet, the back of the equipment, how do you measure offset from the pole? We said from the surface of the pole, so there's no, you know, you're measuring from the center, we just said from the surface, so we accepted that comment. And then staff added, the applicants don't need to satisfy the criteria under 218561104. That's that criteria under Table C, the siding criteria. If you're exempt, you shouldn't have to go through that siding criteria anyway because you're exempt, because you're exempt from the land use process. Yeah, I thought it was inferred, but I just, I just added that and clarified that, okay? In terms of what we were intending, that code in the direction for that to go. Went through the tables B and C and did some clarifying, read the narratives, bullets one through four that go above the table, B and C, and did some clarifying on that. I've been playing with that a bit because of the, the sort of that carrots and whips concept of trying to steer them through the exemption process. And I've been playing around with that back and forth, but spent some time with Josh, and actually, he said, hey, he had some questions. So I met with him and we really went to work on that and I spent quite a bit of time on that and doing the read of what the narrative goes and what the bullet points are on the table. And actually sketched every one of those out and because of those sketches, came up with these clarifications, so to try to take care of any potential conflict between the narrative and the table, so that's what those edits are. Same way for Table C, the exact same concept, just sketched them out and then where there was conflict, I made the modification. So it's a lot to try to digest tonight, of course, and the code. So we'll float back up to the top and what did we try to do with the code? We tried to deal with the location, the process and procedures and the aesthetics, okay? By how we drafted that. And again, I'm going to fall back on Dave's earlier comments. At the same time, knowing that we can't not stop the providers from deploying, right? I mean, the FCC rule does not allow for that. At the same time, trying to anticipate what the concerns would be for deployment in the city and in the residential zones and the community's concern, and deal with the aesthetics and all those issues, and walk that fine line to also try to get something to where if the public was to come in, if the council was to come in, if the planning commissioner come and say, hey, why is this application here and why is it getting approved? Instead of saying, well, it said this, we felt like this, we have a clear process and if there's a deviation from that process, it was because of technical reasons, an engineering analysis and a confirmation of that engineering analysis, which took us down the path to some sort of deviation from that code, okay? So there was, so that there's a clear record. And that not only does, you know, answer questions that the public might have, but it also, it incites the providers potentially from, you know, potential litigation, they have a record there, and also incites the city because we've established a record as to how we got from point A to point D, you know, depending on how far you go down that line. So the where, process and the aesthetics, where the siding criteria is in Table A, that's the tier one, I'm sorry, that's the type one or the type two permitting. Then we went to the tiering system and for, that's in Tables B and C and the tiering is where they can locate. The process is basically the EFR, that's the one we've seen, it was just an eligible facilities request. That's the most common one we've seen over the years. That's a carryover from some laws that are, I think, 10, 15, 20 years old, I can't remember. And so that's a carryover. The medium proposed is 3, 4, or 5G as a small wireless facility. It's an exemption due to the batching and the timing constraints that I mentioned. And substantial would be a new macro, I apologize, the large towers, they're not exempt, they'd have to go through the land use in the full process. So that's a substantial proposal. When we're dealing with the aesthetics, we try to minimize the impact by controlling distance and location without prohibiting deployment. We try to address pole height, design, spacing, landscaping, equipment, and also attachment to existing light standards or to replace. I should also note that we had conversations here that we talked about, if it's in the right of way, the city right now, the way the code is written, it's prohibited to attach to municipal poles. Council with the franchise can waive that, of course, to the franchise agreement and create whatever the council wants to do. Same way, we've prohibited the deployment in parks, but if the council wants to issue a lease and for use of city property, the council could issue a lease, a negotiated lease with the providers for that. So we've covered that, the prohibition, but also the franchise and the lease option within the code. So after you do your hearing this evening, we're looking for a recommendation from the commission to accept changes as noted in the draft and to move the recommendation on to City Council. An alternative recommendation is if you have corrections that you feel you need to make after taking testimony, would we give us the direction to make those changes? We would note those and then still going to proceed on to the council after this evening with those changes. And our process, of course, is that we've gone through is a workshop in December 12th, public hearing February, tonight, February 6th, and then hopefully in front of council, first quarter, might be into the second quarter of 2020, actually. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your dedication to this and your resilience. I will say that I'm an engineer and I'm even worn out talking about some of the technical stuff on this topic, so thank you for your work on this. I would like to just kind of suggest for how we proceed on this, as a suggestion, that we have questions right now. So if you have questions, particularly for Dennis or for David, that we try to cover as much of the questions as we can now, then we'll do the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, we can do discussions and deliberation and hopefully by that point, either make changes and vote or vote and decide what we're going to do. So questions first, public hearing, deliberations and discussion and vote is kind of the intent. So are there questions for Dennis based on where we're at right now?
Thanks, Dennis, for all your work on this. Are you very comfortable with how this is at this point to get us moving forward and in specific regard to the issues that are still unresolved with the vendors?
I am. A couple of reasons why. One, we have talked about these issues quite a bit, we've met with the providers, we've had, we had, I think, a three-hour meeting in the fall and we tried to navigate and negotiate those issues. And I think in that meeting, we accepted something like, you know, 50, 60% of the changes, they were technical. We're trying to hold fast, though, on the issues that we think are going to impact the residents and the community here in terms of the aesthetics. And I think that's just, I just don't think there's going to be an eye to eye on that. The, I understand what the providers are trying to do, they're trying to say, hey, there's a shift in technology, we're not sure if it's going to be, we get that. But the cautionary component is because of that technology and not knowing that it could be shifting, if we had a wide open code, I could not tell you what could be coming or what could be deployed. So I understand their need and their desire to have some flexibility with the code because it is a new technology, it may be shifting. If we relaxed the code and made that open, the question would be, I couldn't tell you what it would be looking like in the future. And with that said, we've also had conversation with the providers and with you folks that we fully expect this code to come back at some point in time. There's a variety of reasons why. The change in technology that the providers have told us, there's some litigation going on at the federal level on this, Congress has taken up this issue, the Senate has taken up this issue, the issue being the FCC rules. And so we fully expect some revisions coming down the pike on this, even if you recommend and council adopts, it'll be back probably sooner rather than later.
I had a couple of general questions and I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, so I don't know if they were discussed before. I know there was a discussion about having towers, the request from the providers to have towers in the parks. Was there a similar request for, to have them around school property and things like that?
I didn't get that request specifically from them on school property. I did get ahold of the two school districts, a brief email exchange, they really didn't have any input. I think if the providers were to approach the schools, I think one of the districts just, if I remember, I can't remember if it was by phone or by email, said no. And another one, I think, said, you know, they haven't been approached and they would deal with it if they were.
And then have we heard back from, or was there any participation from the energy utility companies?
I sent another draft out to PSC and I've not heard. And this last draft, I sent it out to not only the person I was told that was the main contact, but everybody who told me that they were a contact in the past, I added to the distribution list, so like four or five people to PSC.
Because they would become an integral part, especially if we were to, the providers were to co-locate or use those existing poles.
That is correct, exactly right.
So it would be important to get their?
They are aware. A group of them, on another issue I did, was able to sit in and have a few minutes with them, they are aware of it. I think they have the same perspective of they'll deal with it when a provider comes in and the aesthetic parts, I don't think they really care too much about, that would be up to the provider to have to deal with that. So, yeah, I've sent that to them several times and, yeah, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Does the city have any control over what type of technology that the providers would install? I mean, can you mandate that this code applies only for 5G? It appears that it applies to all sorts of technologies.
It applies to all sorts of technologies under that FCC rule, right? All the equipment, right?
Got it. Thank you.
Hey, Dennis, thanks again. The one thing that I noticed was a 600-foot separation for a provider. And my understanding is that for the 5G, that might be too far based on the 200, 300-foot range. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, it is, can I try to bring the PowerPoint back up? I knew the PowerPoint was long, so I added a few at the back and depending on what questions was discussed. And I'll bring this up now to give the providers a chance to comment on this too, please. So go ahead and click to the next slide if you would. One more, one more. So this came from the presentation we received from the providers earlier in the fall. And this is where we're hanging our hat, and plus, hanging our hat on some of the way we've drafted the rules and on some of the reading we did and some of the reading that I've done in other journals and some of the reading of the FCC rules. So you can see in their small cell presentation, I just did a snip art, I didn't do the whole presentation or else I think you guys would have been really upset with me. So I just did some snips and tucked them in here. They are showing for their small cell, 30 to 60 feet, 250 to 750 feet of service area. Verizon's comment that I received earlier today talked about the distance being too far and wanted to have it shrunk down, yet in a comment later noted that the range is 250 feet to 1,000 feet. So my feedback to the commission is, again, it's changing technology, we're not 100% certain, we've heard and had conversations and testimony about a bit of a moving target and I think that's because it is an emerging technology. And so, again, I'm going to take the more, I would recommend taking the more cautious approach, and I did in the draft for you folks, of saying, hey, 600 feet seems to be a workable product, in other words, putting one on a block, at the ends of a block, instead of filling a street, it seems to work within the range and the data out there is moving. But at the end of the day, the 600 is below the 750.
Is it correct, Dennis, to say, though, that 600 feet between poles actually means you're never more than 300 feet from an antenna?
That'd be correct.
Yeah. Sometimes it's hard to visualize that, but I think it's important when we're describing this to be clear. Anyone else here at the desk at the DIAS have questions? I think Josh may have some. So Josh, if you're there, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. Dennis, first, I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with me and go over all this, I really appreciate your efforts here. On the siding criteria, section for sub A and B, the 1,000-foot requirement, there seems to be some concern from the providers about that being too broad of a distance. I was wondering, how realistic would it be to make a change so that the, when they submit the application, they provide documentation that this is the max distance in this area based on these factors and it can support, you know, X distance max and then provide the documentation that they reached out to everyone within that distance? That way it's a little bit more dynamic. I don't know how reasonable that is to ask.
A couple of things, Josh, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. Couple of things is, after we met, I clarified that and I exempted that tiering in the draft for the small wireless facilities, so they would not have to go through that criteria. The other thing is if you were to go to that tier and you met the criteria or say the first bullet point, there's no need for them to go through the 1,000 foot, right? It's only when you're exercising and going down through that process, because why would you need to get ahold of everybody to see if you could use a pole for collocating if the first pole owner you contact says, yeah, it's fine, go ahead? Does that answer your question?
A little, but if the distance, if the max distance of that specific facility is only 500 feet and they have a requirement to go to 1,000 feet and no one within the 500 feet said yes, it seems like a bunch of wasted effort to go out to 1,000 feet max on that since anyone between 501 and 1,000 wouldn't be a realistic, you know, co-location opportunity for them anyway.
So you're looking for a flexible range?
A dynamic, perhaps, and I don't know what the commission might feel about this, but a dynamic range based on what they document and perhaps provable by a third-party review like you have in other areas that says, in this section, this facility can reach X range and we've contacted people within that area.
Yeah, there's a provision, Josh, in the narrative that goes with those tiering systems for, like, say, Table B for the macro, there's those bullet points that go with the tiering system, it's, I almost had off the top of my head, Section 1, it's in Section 1110. I think it's 110 for A through D. And there's a, where it is a technical requirement, like you're talking about in terms of like RF engineering, they are required to have, to move on to a different tier, the RF engineer analysis, to qualify to go to analysis, to qualify to go to the different tier. Okay, I think I'm capturing what you're saying, but it shouldn't have to be 1,000 feet out of there to do that RF engineering analysis. If they, if it's 500 feet and they can make that work, that should work. Is that, am I capturing that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So that would be something that I would recommend that at the end of the hearing, if you want to make a, a motion to the commission to do that modification and direct staff to do that modification, you, you would be able to do that, of course. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Josh. We're all real sad that you're in Belize and we're here this evening. All right. One last chance for any questions. Okay, let's, uh, let's move on to the public hearing. All right. So I'm going to open the public hearing regarding the wireless communication facility code rewrite and replacement. I have a couple of people on the list that would like to make comments and then anyone else afterwards that would like to make comments on this topic can do so. Jackie, what is the time on this? Seven minutes per person? Okay, just to be clear. First up is Devendra. And I just want to point out for those of you, I'm picking up my phone because I have Josh on the text here, so if he wants to butt in and say something, I'm giving him another way to, I'm not looking at my phone and playing candy. What is it? Okay. All right, go ahead, Devendra.
Well, good evening, commissioners and city staff. Welcome to the new commissioners and thank you for serving the city of Sammamish. So again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. I work in the network engineering office located in Bellevue. You should each have a, a copy of the comment letter sent to you today. It contains the items that I'll be addressing tonight. Over the past year, or over the past year, Verizon has worked to collaborate with the city of Sammamish on a workable code that reflects both the community's values and complies with the federal guidelines for small wireless facilities. We've spent a high number of hours on meetings with the city and numerous exchanges for red lines regarding the proposed code. At the last industry meeting in November of 2019, which included city staff and the city's former legal counsel, AHBL, we thought we were making progress. The draft in front of you tonight incorporates very few of the industry changes. The ratio of red highlights on page 11 of your packet tonight illustrates the lack of compromise from the city staff. The concerns that the industry has brought to the city, to the staff and commissioners are to help the city better align with the technological requirements and the governing legal landscape. Instead, the draft contains concerning language, language that will effectively prohibit the deployment of wireless techno, small wireless technology in the city of Sammamish. It also retains elements that do not comply with federal law. We're also concerned because we feel the conversation at the last planning commission meeting did not reflect the months of good faith conversations that we've had with the city and did not reflect the information shared by the industry, which were in sincere effort to collaborate with the city. We believe that the industry has a good track record of successful collaboration with many east side communities as well as communities across the state of Washington. Those Washington communities are now facilitating the deployment of small wireless facilities today. Verizon continues to want to be a partner with the city of Sammamish to enhance the service and the, for the residents, businesses, and visitors that they deserve. Not only are, we are not only partners with the city of Sammamish, but we are also members of your community. Many of our employees are current and former residents of the city of Sammamish who value the aesthetics of the community. The code revisions we're requesting aren't unusual. They've been accepted by cities around Sammamish and within Washington. They will provide a workable path for future wireless upgrades and deployments. The remainder of the comment letter addresses the significant concerns that are still outstanding, and I won't go through those today because they're all on the record previously. But addressing these remaining concerns would avoid an effective prohibition of wireless service. We understand that the city of Sammamish currently does not have a city attorney. These new federal regulations are technical and complex, and a careful review of this code by a legal representative is essential. In closing, the remainder, the remaining issues called out in this letter would materially inhibit our ability to deploy additional infrastructure. This would effectively prohibit the deployment of 5G, but this would also effectively prohibit our ability to maintain and enhance the current 4G network. This is the network that you currently use on your way home tonight. This is the network you'll use to let them know that you're on your way home. This is the network that your first responders rely on, and this is the network you'll use to conduct your business tomorrow. So we urge the city of Sammamish to seek legal review for the current draft and for you to look to the surrounding cities for a better model of wireless code. Verizon remains committed to working with staff to help to develop a good and workable code for the city of Sammamish. Thank you.
Next up is Gregory.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. Our offices are in Issaquah, Washington. I'd like to repeat my comments from previous sessions, but I'll be brief tonight and say that AT&amp;T has concerns with the current code and we asked, asked that the commission recommend that staff take additional time to review the code for one reason: consistency. The code as it is drafted is inconsistent with itself and it is inconsistent with federal law. In the code, there are several defined terms that are used inconsistently. The code does not reference properly, the cross-references reference sections that were moved or changed. The code does not use terms consistent with the Sammamish municipal code for noise regulation. It is inconsistent with the WAC in that regard. There are typographical inconsistencies, and overall, the code is largely unclear and confusing in its intent. I realize the inclusion of graphics and design was intended to make it easier to understand, but unfortunately it has introduced complexities and made it harder to get its message across. The code is also inconsistent with federal law. The 2018 Federal Communications Commission order established standards for small wireless facility review. The current code is inconsistent with the order because several provisions are infeasible for small wireless facility deployment and would effectively prohibit wireless service in areas of the city. Additionally, the shot clocks, as described in the FCC order, the way the code is set up, there are several instances that because there are mandatory pre-application procedures, these procedures start the shot clock. The FCC has made it clear that if there are mandatory pre-application procedures, then the shot clock starts when those procedures take place, not when the application hits the city's desk. This makes, makes it more difficult for the city to respond within the shot clock, and AT&amp;T is concerned that if the city makes it more difficult for it to respond within the shot clock period, that can lead to inconsistency with federal law and difficulty meeting those timelines. The effective prohibition also, AT&amp;T's current equipments, AT&amp;T prefers to use canister antennas, and the current code uses language that restricts canister antennas to the size of no greater than 30% of the diameter of poles. Now, AT&amp;T's current canister antenna is 16 inches in diameter. That means it would need to be mounted on a pole 12 inches in diameter or greater. This means that light poles are effectively right out. 12 inches, that's larger in diameter than light poles are currently, so that prohibits deployment on light standards. We have, uh, referred to more specifics in AT&amp;T's submitted red line earlier, but suffice to say that the code is inconsistent with itself, inconsistent with federal law, and AT&amp;T recommends that the commission, recommend to staff that additional time is warranted to review the code. And I'm happy to take additional time out of my seven minutes to answer any questions the commission may have.
Anyone else like to make public comments? Just as a reminder for the recordings, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Blakely Rickett. My address is 3206 263rd Court in Sammamish. I'm a resident, but I'm also speaking on behalf of the HOA of Tippet Station this evening. And I first want to say thank you to the commission, and I really want to say thank you to the city staff for the unbelievable amount of work that they've put on doing this code and what I've seen evolve over the last year and a half. Now, I'm not a lawyer and I don't work for the city, but I know the city has consulted many lawyers and has plenty of legal staff and legal, legal backing on the actions that they take, and they would not put forth a wireless code that was breaking the law. So thank you to the city for not being intimidated by any such comments as such, because I know that a very detailed effort has been put forth to do things that are representative of being compliant, but also being considerate of the planning for the city. Previously, I stood up and asked that the commission look to add, as we have for the small wireless facilities, a minimum distance between towers, to look at that for the macro tower. My understanding is it is not prohibited by the FCC, and the reason why it could be vitally important is because, as much as we know that the co-locating, co-location, I always say it incorrectly, um, it's a great idea, but nobody wants to do it because everybody wants to have their own tower and everybody's going to say that theirs is not on top, so it's not getting the strength and it's not reaching as far as they want it to reach. And then we're going to have to all pay money for these consultants and then have the third-party review, and then they're going to fight that. So being able to set a minimum distance in order to prevent what is essentially an eyesore and an undue burden on certain communities would be a smart thing to consider. However, I do feel really strongly, from what I've learned tonight, about the number of issues that the wireless folks are trying to halt in this process with the code with possible addition revisions, is that the citizens and the folks of Tippet Station would not want to hold up all the great work that has been done because of that, but just to understand that this is a city planning issue. This is not about just one neighborhood. This is about what do we want our city to look like? If we were to be able to scope back and look at a map and say, how many of these huge towers do we want in our city? How many are we going to have to have? How would we spread them out if we could have some kind of choice? And if we could be deliberate about that, knowing that this is not about planning for the next 10 months or for the applications that we know are upcoming, but this is about planning for the next 10 to 15 years. And so I think that these kinds of things are really important to know whether they get dealt with now or dealt with in stage two. Immediately upon the permit commencing review for macro towers, I believe that there should be absolutely no delay in letting the folks know within the 1,000-foot range because they need lots of time to be able to understand and to be partners with the city and with the staff to understand all of the different hoops and loopholes that the wireless folks might be looking to get through to get something to pass that might otherwise not have to be structured there. I think we need to do all we can within the FCC guidelines, that we keep some of these facilities as far away from people's backyard as possible. I have friends that work in the wireless community. I have a family member who's a lawyer who helps get these permits. We have another friend who does the same. We talk to them all the time about this, and nobody wants it in their own backyard where their kids are going to be playing. It is their job to do this. They are representing business interests. Our job is to represent the city's interests, to not back down on any of these things within the legal parameters. We all feel like, of course we want connectivity. My colleague can speak more to working in the medical industry and about the emergency phone calls and necessity that we are connected really, really well here already. Let's be real, this is about business. This is not about safety in most situations, and it is not about the city not being in compliance. So please do not back down. Please stand up for your city for the long term, and a big, huge round of applause to the city staff who has done so much work in the past 18 months on this. Thank you for your time and thanks to the new commission members.
Thanks, Blakely. Anyone else like to make public comments on this issue?
My name is Jennifer Simmons. I'm at 3346 259th Place Southeast. I'm in Tippet Station. I just wanted to concur with what Blakely stated. There's a huge general consensus behind everything that she stated, so I just wanted to second that, that comment. So that is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anyone else? All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Now, what we should do is do deliberations, but we should have a motion first. So if someone would like to make a motion to get us started? And the motion, I think, would be moving to, move Chapter 21A, 56, wireless communication facilities onto the city council for consideration.
I would make such a motion.
Did you get that, Jackie? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we propose to move the revised Chapter 21A dot 56 wireless communications facilities and recommend to the city council that they take up this revision and consider it. All right, so deliberations, comments, discussion. Who has some comments they'd like to make? Wow. No one? How about you, Josh? If you're still there and you've had a couple more Mai Tais, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, no more Mai Tais right now, but I do have a comment. So while I can appreciate the network providers' concerns with the code, what I can't appreciate is the fact that on every single work session, and now with this public hearing, all the comments and suggestions and suggested revisions to the code were received in, with 24 hours and, well, time to review or perhaps less, and there was at least to me, no reach out by any of the network providers to engage with us. So while they might have engaged with the city in November, I never had any personal engagement, and so I couldn't have advocated for any of the items they suggested because I don't have a technical background and I did not have time within the short period of time that I received the suggested edits to really do a deep dive into what they were Because of those reasons and the fact that I think Dennis has done a great job on this code and we've all looked at it thoroughly, I'm ready to move it forward to the city council for them to give it a second look. And that's the end of my comments.
I have a number of comments, but I want to check with you, Josh. Do you, would you, do you feel it's necessary that we recommend the amendment, an amendment based on the discussion that you and Dennis had a few minutes ago?
I think it's something the city council should, I don't. I think it's something the city council might want to consider looking at, but I don't feel comfortable with the limited knowledge I have to be able to make that amendment and know that it was the right decision.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Other comments, deliberation comments or questions? I have a few comments that may echo Josh a bit. This has been a fairly grueling topic and we spent a lot of time on it. And one of the things that I would say that I think is, uh, it's easy to critique and complain, but it's hard to collaborate and contribute, and it's been very frustrating on our part that most of the comments that we've received from the providers, who are an absolute critical part of this and who we should be working together closely with, most of the comments that we've seen, and there may be those that were behind the scenes that we didn't see, I acknowledge that, most of them have either been language edits, which seems like spell check could probably do just as good a job, complaints about inconsistency, which exist in every code all over the place. These are minor things. I've heard very few clear indications of, from the providers of what you want to deploy, where of what you want to deploy, where you want to deploy it, how you want to deploy it. When you want to talk about inconsistencies, we get consistent inconsistencies in the comments. Sometimes the same set of comments will even conflict with each other, much less between the providers. My point is that the way this, in my opinion, should work is that industry and our municipal government should be able to sit down and work together to find a common solution that allows what you want and what our community wants. But we've not gotten a clear message ever, even when I've asked direct questions about what it is that the wireless providers want to do, I can't get a clear answer. I've never gotten a clear answer, and I don't believe Dennis has either. And it makes it very difficult for us to write code or to make rules when we don't know what it is we're trying to aim for. In my mind, what I think this is, is, you know, it's like throwing darts at a moving dartboard blindfolded, and everybody's sitting on the sideline and is giving you conflicting information about which direction you should aim. We're doing the best we can without good participation and input from industry. You can go through and critique and send us letters from attorneys that are vaguely threatening that you're going to go to the FCC and get us into trouble by dad. That's not productive. We need to understand what it is that you want to do so that we can work with it. We haven't had that, in my opinion, having spent quite a bit of time on this. So I believe that what Dennis has done is provided something that is an excellent start, that's dove deep into the technical details, that's consistently moved from a first draft in a circle towards what's been requested by the providers while continuously acknowledging what the community has asked for. I think it's a good start. And as Dennis said, and I completely agree, and we've said this all along, it's a start. So the good news is, there's a lot of opportunity to make improvements, to make changes. And if the wireless providers, who are going to deploy this system, will come to the table and make constructive comments about what it is that we can do to, you know, not worry about some of the technical things that one provider wants and the other provider doesn't, and we'll change in two months anyway, what can we do to create a code that doesn't leave it wide open? And you can say that other communities have worked. That's fine. We're not other communities. We're a residential community. Where neighborhood character is important. We don't have a lot of commercial space. We don't have a lot of industrial space. We have neighborhoods, and we need to look out for those neighborhoods. And I have not yet understood, in a technical sense, how your system would work in this community, and no one has been able to articulate it. So I am very much in support of moving the code forward to the City Council for their consideration. And if the folks from the wireless community would like to come forward with productive comments about what you want to do, how you want to do it, where you want to do it, are you deploying on 228th? Are you deploying on arterials? Are you deploying in neighborhoods? When is this going to happen? Is it going to be next month, three years from now? These questions have never been addressed and never been answered. So I think that we should absolutely recommend moving this forward to the City Council and put in place something that is a good starting point for the community, and then we can adapt as we go, make improvements and revisions, as we do with all of the rest of our code in this community. All right. I got to say my piece on my soapbox. And you know that I will support this motion. Anyone else like to make any comments?
I'll just conclude and support what you're saying, Chairman. I also want to focus that, you know, I think in our packet today, Dennis, you had listed our city goals, what's in our comprehensive plan. And I think, when I went through all the policies and the strategies, I think they relate really well back to the code that we've worked so far. I think the one thing that has stood out for me always is this is a start, that as we go, as the industry grows, as the city grows, as we get to know how this looks for our communities... I mean, there's already, you've built in a variance there. You've built in kind of, you know, decision points where we can have some leverage and make decisions based on specific applications. So there is flexibility already built into this code. And, you know, I think there are some certain things, like, you know, parks, for example. I think we've been very clear that we will not allow, or, you know, like the poles that are outside here, that those are just not suitable amenities to host these SFWs on. So I do think that it's a great start for our community, and as we go ahead, we learn, and when we have practical implications, we can work together. I do want to agree, you know, I have, in the past two years, read a lot of code, and this has been probably the most complicated. And also, the feedback has been very difficult to absorb because it's been sort of in many different places, right? So as Commissioner Baughman said, I think we look forward to hearing from the providers as we go ahead. But even as you speak in front of the council, make sure that, you know, you're really clear in your comments, and tables helps, comparison helps. So if anything that you can do to make your side clearer, that would be helpful, too. So thank you again, Dennis and David, for guiding this through months and months, and we're here today. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to record my thanks to, you know, the staff here, David especially. Had a lot of questions in the morning, patiently answered. Newbie here, so thank you very much.
Josh, any final comments?
I do not.
Okay. If no one else has any comments, then I'm going to call for the vote. The motion is to move this revised code forward and recommend the City Council take it up and consider it. Okay? All those in favor of doing so, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion passes. We can move this forward to the City Council. Thank you, Dennis. All right. Anything else for this evening from you, David? Anything about the calendar, or anything else we need to discuss before we wrap it up?
Yeah, so there's a short-term calendar that's presented in the packet. We are currently in the process of work planning following the City Council retreat last weekend. We, actually, the weekend before that, excuse me. We've been looking pretty closely at our work plan, our capacity, our budget, and trying to figure out how everything fits together. So we will be coming back with another more extensive version of this calendar, once we have plotted everything out, because there are many moving pieces that interrelate, dates, et cetera, that have to be incorporated into our work planning. And we're in the midst of that at this point, and should know more about that soon.
And I believe we should all look out for, there was one meeting that was discussed that the date may change, so... Yeah, so just please keep an eye out for that.
April 16th, I believe. The request was to move that either before or after, and part of that is due to both Issaquah School District, Lake Washington School District, and all the other schools' spring breaks, and that many staff, and I believe possibly some Commissioners, might be out of town, as will many residents in the community.
All right. Anyone have anything else? If not, I could, would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Thank you, we are adjourned.